Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our first meeting with Council of the Year 2020. We’ll start with our traditional moment of silent reflection. I would ask that everyone remember the worst possible catastrophe and occurrence that’s ever stricken our community occurred 14 years ago today with the Segow Mine Disaster. We lost 12 brave men, and let’s keep those 12 guys and their families in our best thoughts, wishes, and prayers this year.
If I could mention too, that Mary Benlow under the weather, so let’s keep him in our thoughts as well.
That’s nice of you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mr. Cozad, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this year?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. The only guest we have, no one notified us in advance, Ron Pugh would like to address the council. Ron?
It’s not going. Good morning, gentlemen.
How you doing?
And lady. I’ve often stood up here and nobody knew what I was gonna say, and it kinda made everybody feel uneasy, but this is a good thing, I think. I’ve been noticing, since I’ve been out of town for a month and a half, got back walking up the street, and there are some storefronts on this end of Main Street. Aeneas Flower Shop back this way, the old bicycle barn, but the exterior on the bottom is in terrible repair. And with all the beautification that’s going on down here in Buchanan and everything that’s going on across the street with the new theater we’re building, I was hoping the city might see fit to come up with a small grant or something like that for the either property owner or the renters to repair that and make it look, make it shine like it should down through there. That’s one of the most seen parts of Buchanan when they walk down to the art gallery and all those stores down through there. That’s my comment tonight, and by the way, I have not seen the dentist characters on top. I like them. Now, if you’d just put Lurch up there with them, it’d just be great.
Thanks, Ron. I’m gonna address renewal of the facade grant here in just a few minutes.
All right. Thanks.
All right, before we recognize our department board folks, I’d like to deliver to you all for your consideration a state-of-the-city address. The beginning of our new year, and indeed this new decade, poses a timely opportunity for us to look ahead to consider our city’s future while also reflecting back a bit for our residents to better understand why we plan the way we do. We continue to believe that our community is excellently postured to further raise the bar on our quality of life here for all residents. Please indulge me for the next few minutes as I share our plans and vision municipal department by department for 2020. Our utility and public safety operations shall always be the core of our social services. We enjoy excellent leadership from our two directors, Jerry Arnold on the public work side and Ambie Jenkins on the administration and finance side. We couldn’t do what we do without either of them. Our waste collection board launched its new toter system in 2018, and nearly 75% of our customers throughout Upsher County have now received their new toters. We’ve already realized greater efficiency, improved employee safety, and all residents and businesses alike are more fully accountable for the services provided to them, which helps us all save money. In collaboration with our Streets and Parks Department, our city needs to prioritize construction of a new welding garage, tool building, and locker room at our mud lick run facility. Jerry Arnold will share details in the months ahead, but we know that there will be a cost association of several hundred thousand dollars with this project that will be shared by Waste Collection and our general fund. We need to continue to invest in and be good stewards of the physical plants for all of our facilities, but we have not been as attentive to Waste Collection and Streets and Parks facilities as we need to be. I note that there has not been a rate increase in waste collections here since 2011, and in this age, to see the rates of any service remain the same for nine years is unheard of. We need to improve our reserve funds for waste collection emergencies. Jeff Wamsley’s guys continue to perform in exemplary fashion. Our Water Board experienced a very busy 2019. We completed the decommissioning of the St. Joseph’s tank. The increase in our reserve water supply is all part of the anticipated future growth in our community associated with the ever nearing completion of Corridor H. Our cooperative arrangement with Dominion Resources and the construction of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project has resulted in the completion of $2.3 million worth of improvements to our water distribution system, with all costs being borne entirely by ACP. Understand that these much-needed improvements would have been undertaken in the future in-house, with the cost borne entirely by our residents and businesses. So completion of this project pushes us years ahead, as our waterworks distribution system has been greatly enhanced without having to increase fees. Currently, as of January 1, Buchanan ranks 37th out of the 366 Public Service Commission regulated water utilities in the entire state of West Virginia. That means we provide our water services among the most affordable communities in all of West Virginia and are at the 10.1% lowest rates in our entire state. To be clear, about 90% of the water providers in West Virginia charge more for their water than does Buchanan. This data is available on the West Virginia Public Service Commission website. Our Harley A. Brown Memorial Water Plant work completed in 2019 was highly beneficial, with nearly complete overhaul of the plant’s electrical system. We anticipate working closely with the Adrian Public Service District to realize additional improvements to the southern portion of our water distribution system. We will continue to insist that all of the outlying public service districts improve their maintenance programs with their own systems to minimize the potable water that ends up being dumped into the ground. I propose a water summit during which we will invite all public service districts to meet together to better determine how we can all work together to reduce potable water loss. Members of the Upsher County Commission are invited, particularly since they are responsible for the formation and oversight of all PSDs. All of our partnering PSDs are now providing meeting minutes to our city so that we may know of their needs and intentions. The leaky rates of some PSDs is untenable, and we must all work together in becoming better stewards of our precious water. City Engineer Jay Holland is working to identify ways to increase our raw water storage that might double for some form of water recreation. Water Superintendent Kelly Arnold’s staff is performing outstandingly. On the cusp of losing multiple Class III and IV plant operators, we implemented a new compensation model to retain our operators. To preserve the integrity of our water system, we know we have to pay living and competitive wages and benefits. On the whole, our waterwork system has never been better positioned than they are right now. By the way, Buchanan’s water was judged to be the best or tied for the best tasting water in all of West Virginia for the past two years. Jay Holland is evaluating another substantial water storage tank that would permit us to decommission both the Coreheart and High School water storage tanks while adding even more volume to our reserve water supply. About the 1st of March, we will partner with J.F. Allen on the south side of Route 33 West to extend water to future development along Corridor H. If you build it, they will come. Our sanitary board continues to function in an exemplary manner. Opened in 1987 with a then 30- to 40-year life expectancy, Engineers Sam Ludlow and Sanitary Superintendent Buck Samples now estimate that in 2020, our Samuel S. Ludlow Sewer Plant should endure for another 30 to 40 years, given the excellent and persistent upgrades and maintenance of our existing physical plant operations, all again undertaken in-house. Sam and Buck have a combined city tenure of 75 years. Currently, as of January 1, and following rate increases during the past two years, Buchanan ranks 157th out of 319 PSC-regulated sewer utilities in the state of West Virginia. That means our sewer services rank in the middle of the pack in affordability in West Virginia, and we are at the 49.3% lowest rate in our state. To be clear, more than half of all sewer providers in West Virginia charge more to treat their sewage than does Buchanan. This data also is available on the West Virginia Public Service Commission website. Similar to our water plant operators, we adopted a competitive compensation model for our sewer plant operators in 2019 to retain them. Remember, during 2017, and after decades of discussion, all storm sewer operations were formally designated by this council as being undertaken by our sanitary board. Our sewer staff has been engaged in extensive planning within and outside the corporate limits to improve our stormwater system, and with passage of the 1% sales tax ordinance that was implemented yesterday, we anticipate great strides in further improving our stormwater system as funding becomes available, with $200,000 of the new funds being allocated to stormwater improvements annually. By the way, we’re building new sanitary sewer on both the north and south sides of Route 33 West beginning in March. Permitting is already underway. I’d be remiss if I failed to note that both our water and sanitary sewer operations are now fully compliant with state mandates to maintain a 12.5% reserve fund based upon a state operational revenues formula. We’re now universally prepared for emergencies as they arise. Our boards have been excellent stewards of our water and sewer funds. In Streets and Parks, there are a number of projects identified for 2020. Many more paving and sidewalk projects are planned, including near the city’s seal mural and extending north along Route 20, Canaw, North Spring, and Florida Streets. The several hundred feet of new sidewalk along Madison and Mead Streets enhances pedestrian access to downtown and Jawbone Park. The Gateway West Project will start this spring, and soon there will be an amazing mile of new sidewalk, period lighting, holiday banners, and complete streets from the first Buchanan exit all the way to our college campus. In 2019, we realized completion of the state project, improving 88 sidewalk intersect points downtown and all along Route 20 and Canaw Street. This has greatly enhanced ADA compliance throughout our community, and particularly in the highest pedestrian traffic areas. Our North Buchanan area will soon realize important improvements, including sidewalk projects along North Florida Street, First Street, and Morton Avenue. Sidewalks improve our community health, making it more appealing to walk than drive, and we are constructing sidewalks that are accessible to everyone. We remain committed to realizing complete streets. The North Buchanan Park, recently rededicated with ADA compliant parking and sidewalks and new playground equipment, realized more improvements during 2019 with new installation of fencing and security cameras. Jawbone Park realized new improvements last year with installation of a new sound system, new canopies along the Veterans Walk of Valor, and several more benches, including our Best Bench. Our Fred Brooks Park, also known as the Triangle Park, also is receiving substantial upgrades. Our Trader’s Alley Milkman Lane Project has been nearly completed, and we hope to dedicate the Men in Black Car, Pankow Cove, and other art installations this summer, connecting our beautiful downtown to our primary community gathering spot in Jawbone Park. We’ll soon dedicate the new Green Park in front of the city’s seal mural. Our River Trail will be further enhanced with construction of a new pavilion located near the boat ramp and the Dog Park, while our Dog Park continues to realize fun-filled and aesthetically appealing improvements. The Dog Park will continue to be developed by our excellent city crews, with support funding coming from the volunteers comprising our Dog Park Committee. We look forward to at long last realizing our handicapped fishing pier. We will work with our cycling friends and seek to extend our River Trail to our high school and beyond Tosego to our south, and Pringle Tree Park to the north. We’re working out details with West Virginia’s Quintral Fence to connect the dots between our downtown and the Wesleyan campus portion of our River Trail. We resumed cemetery mowing in-house in 2017, saving our residents thousands of dollars annually while employing new seasonal workers. The sidewalk improvements along South Spring Street are spectacular. We also realized storm sewer improvements as part of the South Spring Project, improving stormwater removal downtown. Grants have permitted us to make tremendous strides in the rehabilitation of our Colonial Theater. We have now secured more than half of our funding for this four-phase project. We have a new floor that can sustain 200 tons. A new roof has been installed. The restored marquee is back up. The windows have been rehabbed. The stage and proscenium have been reinstalled. The HVAC, water, and gas plumbing and electrical systems are nearing completion. Our guys will be working on the balcony and lobby areas of our theater. Buchanan Community Theater performed Dracula in October, and we are committed to additional BCT performances in the Colonial throughout 2020, including Clue the Play next October. This facility will be a crown jewel of our community when completed, servicing our arts entities, but especially our youth. Soon, we will need to consider the hire of a talented person to oversee theater management and our Stockard Art Programs. It is critical that we entertain the formation of a municipal arts commission to oversee planning and policymaking for your Colonial Theater. Speaking of our youth, we continue to celebrate the silver anniversary of our Stockard Youth and Community Center in 2020. We plan on breaking ground on our new multi-use complex in 2020, and many more fundraisings are planned as we try to edge closer to undertaking that vital project for the benefit of our kids. We have now raised about $180,000 with our renewed SYCC Capital Campaign during the past two years, and the total of our capital campaign is now $330,000. Dixie Green took over as our city horticulturist in October, and her crew will continue to work their magic with our floral and landscaping program. The entrances to town are receiving some much-needed sprucing up, replete with new plantings and lighting. We realized community fruit orchards and vegetable gardens during the 2019 growing season. We’re going to further expand our wildflower program in 2020. Brad Hawkins’s guys simply amaze us. That said, we should consider expanding the ranks in Streets and Parks, and we believe that the hire of two new skilled positions would enhance our opportunity to expedite our successes. Our Police Department welcomed a new member in 2019 with the hire of Colin Coke, who completed his academy training 1st of November. Our officers are unanimously committed to Kalia accreditation, and Kalia Committee has been very busy. We continue to develop holistic policies in addressing our drug epidemic. We reinstituted the Neighborhood Watch Program in North Buchanan. We continue to expand our VIPS program. Kudos go out to Matt Gregory’s excellent officers and staff for protecting our lives and property. Our Fire Department will be working on its own IFAA accreditation efforts during 2020, and all of our members are performing very well under the leadership of Chief J.B. Kimball. The collaboration among our paid and volunteer fighters continued to establish Buchanan as one of the best-prepared fire departments in the state. Our guys need a new rescue pumper truck soon, and the council needs to prepare for ordering that new vehicle in 2020. This vehicle will permit us to retire three 1990s vehicles from our fire fleet. This new, fully-equipped vehicle is expected to cost about $500,000, thanks to all of our paid and volunteer firefighters for their selfless time and commitment to protecting our lives and property. I will be appointing a fire finance committee to investigate a self-sustaining model for our fire department that will emulate the successes realized in our neighboring cities of Bridgeport and Elkins through our consideration of a first-due fire fee. With 40% plus of all calls taking our city firefighters, trucks, and equipment outside of our corporate limits hundreds of times per year, the meager contribution from the county fire fee to our expanding protection for about 80% of the county’s population and the vast majority of total property value in Upsher County is simply unfair to be shouldered near exclusively by Buchanan’s residents. We still plan on completing the exterior improvements to the public safety complex with new lighting, reconfigured parking spaces, and landscaping. We dedicated the new Police Department Blue Wall in 2019 to complement the Fire Department’s Red Wall dedicated during Friendly Way Day 2017. It remains very important for us to remember the foundations for today’s successes, recognizing those who made it all possible. Our Community Scrapbook Wall will come to be dedicated in the frequently-used community and training room. In 2019, we added a few more tables and chairs for this much-used room and an additional TV monitor. Since our bonds on the public safety complex are nearly paid for, I propose tonight to our council that we retire the $3 monthly fee, but institute a $1 per month public safety complex maintenance fee and an additional $1 per month Stockard Facility maintenance fee. Our Stockard Youth and Community Center continues to provide safe haven to so many of our children. We average more than 13,000 youth involvement hours every month at SYCC. To be clear, about 160,000 youth hours are now realized annually at Stockard. Michelle Harder has been a nice addition to Dever Brockelman’s staff. We simply have to realize our new building at Stockard. Callie Crennan-Sams has made us vastly better at information sharing, while she has aided us reaping many more grant awards than ever before. If we prove successful with our abandoned Mines Land Grant application, that $3.8 million investment will be one of the biggest game changers in Buchanan’s history. What a terrific application Callie assembled on our city’s behalf. It’s the best I’ve ever read. Our City Hall staff has never been stronger than it is right now. Barb, Teresa, Kathy, Billy, Holly, Alice, Shayla, Amy, and Sue, we thank you. We thank City Attorney Tom O’Neill, who has stepped up our legal work with Assistant City Attorney Matt Heims’s tragic path last April. Our Municipal Court Judge Helen Eckert does a super job for us. The talents and contributions of City Architect Bryson Van Nostrand are invaluable to our successes. 2019 saw our vibrant downtown continue to grow in leaps and bounds. The Innovation Center opened its doors during 2019, and we anticipate some big announcements soon regarding its occupancy. Jester Line has brought new virtual reality to our downtown. Pete of My Heart and Mama Roma’s offers us even more choices in quality cuisine, and the Social Grill and Bar is reopened under new management. Developers from throughout the region continue to invest substantially in our downtown. Be prepared to learn about another huge building project downtown that will eclipse the size of the Innovation Center. In fact, we’ve realized approaching $20 million in new construction in our downtown during the past four years. We have virtually 100% storefront occupancy on our Main Street. We still understand we’ll welcome Butera’s reopening center. Travis Foster has become an excellent partner in our downtown developments, and we hear that there will be a substantial investment made in his primary building downtown in the months ahead. We’ll continue to partner with business big and small, seeking to expand or establish their enterprises in beautiful downtown Buchanan. These developments add jobs, expand our tax base, and increase those visiting our city who spend their dollars in droves in Buchanan. We’ll continue to work closely with our wonderful friends and former protectors, the members of our American Legion and VFW, on various projects, including plans to develop the Veterans Way Loop on Canaw Street and expand the Walk of Valor and Flags for the Fallen projects. By the way, we installed new flags at all of our city facilities during 2019, including flag poles at our Blue Wall, water and sewer plants, waste collection facility, and Streets Garage on Factory Street. We’ll partner again in 2020 with the West Virginia Strawberry Festival to help stage the most successful festival in all of West Virginia. By the way, Gamble Amusements and the Turner Family relocated their corporate headquarters to Buchanan during 2019. What a terrific tribute to our town. Our festival is the single most important event held each year in our community, and it’s an opportunity to show off what we do for the entire region. We’ll continue to work closely with Create Buchanan, Art 26201, Buchanan Community Theater, and all arts-related groups to expand public arts in all forms, visual and performing. Where would we be without Festival Fridays, art installations downtown, and BCT performances? Our primary partners will benefit from our collaboration. West Virginia Wesleyan College, St. Joseph’s Hospital, the Upsher County School System, the CVB, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Development Authority. We’ve collaborated with our Board of Education to remove a distressed and dangerous structure adjacent to our Board Office this past summer, while the Board of Ed created 60 new off-street parking spaces to alleviate parking issues along College Avenue. Similarly, Wesleyan added dozens of new off-street parking spaces through building raising projects. It’s still the prettiest campus in all of West Virginia. It is important that we continue to support our partners in their endeavors. This council resolved to help realize school levy passage for the benefit of all of our children with our levy carrying 2 to 1, with city residents supporting the levy at a rate of about 3 to 1. We contributed another $10,000 to rebuilding South Spring Street to facilitate the UCDA’s Innovation Center, and our Water Department contributed about $6,000 toward a new booster station near the Warehouser Plant for the Upsher County Development Authority. Despite being a county entity, our city remains the single biggest financial sponsor of our Development Authority. Our city affirmatively responded to requests for parking designation by our parish house along Sedwick Street and lowering of the speed limit on Camden Avenue in front of the Child Development Center. The four-way stop signs in Madison and South Florida Street have added to pedestrian safety with the many activities occurring in Jawbone Park. We need to renew our support for small business through our Facade Grants Program, which we let lapse in 2019. We’ll continue to help clean up properties through our Good Neighbor Grant Program, helping those who need it most. We need to budget resources to condemn and acquire distressed properties. Our new parking policy has been fully implemented and has helped spur activity in our downtown. We will continue to honor and support the Blessing Box and Little Free Library Programs and the excellent volunteers that make those programs so successful and which distinguish Buchanan from all other places. Speaking of volunteers, our Volunteer Center continues to flourish, and we appreciate the good work of Gabby Sager. Our second, now annual, Community Unity and Kindness Day was a nice success in October, and we look forward to many more Best Awards, that is, Buchanan’s exemplary service testimonials during 2020. We’ve already recognized 15 individuals and groups. We need to continue to pause to give those much-earned pats on the back to those who make our city so terrific and inviting, warm and attractive. We will continue to partner with Matt Turner and Opportunity House, Community Care, and Doug Spears’s entities to remove the stigma of addiction while creating a welcoming environment for those in recovery. We’ll partner in the annual HAHA, that is, Hope and Help Assembly, followed by our Children’s Festival, Truck Fest, Fall Fest, and all of our annual Halloween through Christmas Eve. Festival, Truck Fest, Fall Fest, and all of our annual Halloween through Christmas fun. We would love to make Jawbone Park a true winter wonderland for the 2020 holidays. Festival Friday folks are already scheduling a full summer 2020 season. That new chicken barbecue is the bomb. We'll continue to collaborate with the River Festival Group as they celebrate our community's water supply late next summer, although we'll miss our friend, April Keating. Our reconstituted planning commission performed yeoman's work to develop our 2025 comprehensive plan that was approved by council in 2019. Special thanks to Curtis Wilkerson, Susan Aloy, Rich Clemmons, Dean Everett, Catherine Capery, Jack Rieger, Matt Turner, Vincent Smith, and CJ Rylands. Our Diversity Appreciation Coalition will continue to perform important work to expand our all-inclusiveness as we celebrate such events as the Lighting of Our Menor, Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and Black History Month in January and February. The Buchanan Pride Group will gather again in June. We'll continue to recognize our history and to tell our story and to recognize those who brought positive attention and accolades to our BU community. We recognized JD Henkel Jr., Charlie Harbor, and Jimmy Panco in 2019, and soon we will add Jim Nor, Garland West, Steve Coontz, Jane Anne Phillips, Brice Deje Pancake, our state's longest-recognized poet laureate Irene McKinney, Earl Greasy Neal, Cliff Battles, Press Maravich, the Carter Sisters, and others to our list of honors. We will do all these things while being cleaner, greener, and more sustainable than ever before. Jerry Arnold will be happy to discuss with you the differences between retention and detention boxes. It's exciting. We will do all these things while being more inclusive than ever before. We cannot, as a community, tolerate the actions of those who seek to divide us or to marginalize any of our residents. They must be rebuffed. Anyone, regardless as to their race, ethnicity, gender, religion, age, handicap, orientation, or familial status, who seeks to be a part of our community's successes is invited to participate with us and to offer help and opinions in making our community even better. Our mission is not to be the best community around. Our mission is simply to be the best community that we can be. I have no doubt that with our excellent staff of 85 full-time employees, that we shall take our community to another higher level during 2020. Our outstanding employees make all of these things possible. We implemented pay raises for all full-time employees during 2019. Our success as a city is attributed to our folks in the trenches who repair broken utility lines under the most trying of conditions, our first responders who answer the police and fire calls at all hours and under the most unpleasant of circumstances, our workers who are hanging off at the back of our garbage trucks whether it's zero or 95 degrees, and the caretakers of our streets, public ways, and parks. We continue to recognize the value of those labors, and we are committed to retaining our very talented and valuable workforce. During 2019, we formed the new Insurance Committee and Technology Committee, both of which were highly engaged and whose work saved our city considerable funds. We thank all of those members for their constructive work. I want to most sincerely thank my colleagues on this city council, who have steadfastly sponsored and supported initiatives to make our organization and community stronger. I would be remiss if I didn't observe that new city recorder Randy Sanders has taken to his job like a duck to water. Each of the seven of us maintain our pet passions and projects for our community, and that's okay, too. Pam Bucklew favors the holidays with the Fourth of July festivities and winter holiday decorations. Mary Alba is all about all things veterans. CJ Rylands favors Jawbone Events and our vibrant downtown. Dave Thomas helps oversee all things financial. Robbie Skinner has special affinity for our fire department. Randy Sanders has a 40-year connection with our Strawberry Festival. In closing, please do not be deterred or unduly influenced by the few, and there are few, naysayers, on social media, many of whom who do not even reside in our corporate limits. These people constitute a small but omnivocal minority of our residents and are not the voice of the vast majority of our people. We truly are all in this together. May 2020 smile kindly and fondly upon our Buchanan. It continues to be my great honor and privilege to be in this chair in the finest city in all of West Virginia.
Move to dismiss. Come back next January. Department and Board reports. Let's go with Callie Crennan-Sams first off. Callie, I'm going to drink some water.
Thank you. That's a talk I have to follow.
That's a seven-page.
Yeah.
This thing has been really sick thinking he was feeling good. He was a busy year.
Yeah, well, a very nice tribute to the community, the town, and all the people here who worked so hard to make it what it is. Thank you, and moving into my report, be a little briefer, I promise. Just starting out looking at our website and social media traffic the past couple of weeks. We've had a couple thousand come to our website. We had a lot of help from the community. We had our police put up some photos, muted some help and some identification. We were able to recover a resident's bicycle, thanks to the help from the community there and the hard work of our police department, of course. We also had people visiting to find out the holiday schedule for waste collection, pay their utility bills, had a lot of hits on Dr. Harvey's city ambassadorship. That was awarded at the last city council meeting. Had people also looking at Create Buchanan's Best Award and also the recycling page and general attractions around town, so just looking for some information about our community and the services provided. Let's see. Oh, the winter wagon rides, we shared some photos and video there, and those were popular as well as the wagon rides were, of course. Got to participate in that, and it's always a really fun time and appreciate all the hard work for people that do to put that on, and her brothers were able to participate as well. Moving down into grants and our active grants, the Volunteer Center is going strong. Gabby is changing her hours this coming semester. She's also a student at Wesleyan, so kind of facilitate her class schedule as well. She'll be working Tuesdays and Thursdays, 11:30 to 4:30 this next several months. And she's been planning with our service scholar, Elizabeth, for the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service and working with Michelle Harder and the after-school programs there. So she'll be doing some activities over at Stockard, actually the day after MLK Junior Day, since there's no school on that Monday. Let's see, what else? We were awarded that Physical Activity Transportation Hub Grant, and we're still waiting to hear back on the details of how they want us to proceed with that, and we're waiting to hear back also on the Safe Routes to Parks application that was kind of submitted jointly as a total project there. Still working with the Buchanan River Watershed Association on a partnership for an EPA Environmental Education application that would allow fifth-grade students to come and visit several sites in the watershed, including our water plant and sewer plant, and learn more about how our water department treats and distributes water and then how we put it back into the watershed afterwards. The REAP recycling bid was approved for the hooklift truck, and let's see, still working on our community after-school 21st Century Community Learning Center grant as well to go ahead and put in an application for that this spring. There's a few others there that you can see that we've been researching. We're still waiting on the AML pilot to see how that goes this time. And coming up on the 24th, I did want to mention, is the Community Spelling Bee that supports the Upshur Arts Alliance, and the city will have a table and be participating in that again. It's a good event, and we encourage others to participate as well. And then on February 2nd, of course, it'll be Groundhog Day. And at the bottom, it didn't print out very well, but you can just see what we have on the LED sign near Sheetz right now. It's just a Happy New Year, and it has the website in nice, large font, so people who are coming into town can get to our website and learn more about what's going on here. And of course, we also link to the CVB and others in town.
And now I'm standing supposedly knowing about our AML grant, September issue. We've not heard of it.
It's strange.
But nobody else knows anything either.
No.
We're still in the running. Questions for Callie?
Comment. Callie, on the spelling bee, we're also going to have the fire department, the police department, and Stockard.
Oh, yes, that's right. I apologize. I shouldn't mention that. We got, what, four or five tables last year competing.
Yeah, and we have sponsors for some of those tables.
I don't know, Mike Buchanan's table, or Dana's table. There's always some tables out there, heavy competition.
Berks from the table is pretty tight.
They're tough.
That's what Katie always says.
You ready for Dana, Ray?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're tough, too.
Dana was a first entry this year.
Was she? They always come dressed up and...
I'm going to double her fee next year if she wins.
There you go.
Any other questions for Callie? Thanks, Callie. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
Public Works Director Jerry Arnold, how's it going, everybody?
Very good. Who are you? Okay. I'm working on a revised memorandum of understanding with the J.F. Allen Company for the 33 West Southside Sewer and Water Project. The other property owners did not want to participate in the project at this time, so we'll be working that, reworking that. Got a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday in-house to discuss the project and how we move forward. Water Department's providing construction inspection observation on the Brushford Waterline Replacement Project and finishing up the fencing of the treatment plant. Sewer Department, the Crew One has continued working on the CJ Martin Extension, and Crew Two's working on a storm sewer drop on 121 East Main Street. The maintenance crew is installing caution lights on all rolling stock and its routine maintenance for the plant crew. Street Department, we continue to work in theater, working on sidewalk construction as weather permits and upgrades at the Fred Brooks Park, as the mayor mentioned. Under engineering, I'm just going to hit the highlights here of Jay's report. You all are welcome to read that in your leisure. He's submitted a changescope letter for the FEMA Generator Hazard Mitigation Grant, Program Applications 1 and 2, and of course, the construction on the Brushford Waterline Replacement started December 23rd. The West Virginia Flood Plane Ordinance, he's working with Tom on that to revise that. And the Quarter H North Sanitary Sewer Collection, as the mayor mentioned in his report. We've already started on permitting on the north side and obtaining our permits for that. That's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions.
Questions for Jerry?
Jerry, you said that several property owners did not want to participate in the project at this time?
Three identified, two did not.
Are we still taking into account that they may come in later with the line, so we're not engineering them out of the program, but just leaving?
We're just not building the facility at this time.
So at some point, it could be continued on. Waiting for that?
Yes, the property of J.F. Allen is the property owner that's wanted to pursue the project, and in our agreement with J.F. Allen, the line will be built to the last manhole on their property, and we will get a right-of-way for the remainder, which is only about 100 feet or so, to their property line, and then the properties upstream of that could sign on a later date.
So we're leaving out, completing everything except for the last 100 yards, and you get a legal right-of-way to take it?
We will have. That's part of the memorandum of understanding, as we rule on.
Thank you.
Our respective contributions on utilities, 100,000 water, 100,000 sewer, will be reduced to about $60,000 each because there's about a 40% reduction in the total extent of the project.
It appears so right now. Again, that meeting next week's more in particulars. That's why I haven't rewritten the MOU yet. There's also some particulars about who's going to build the project because J.F. Allen was... J.F. Allen had crews available this winter, and they've since gotten other jobs to send their crews out on. So it's a possibility that the city crews will be actually installing this now instead of J.F. Allen. So that's part of the revised memorandum.
And the booster, the pump station, rather, that we were going to construct will not be necessary for this phase. J.F. Allen property will be serviceable without a pump station.
Which I think to this point could be gravely similar.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Yeah, I mean, Jared, the toders that we hand out now, I know in the beginning when we were getting those, it was discussed about possibly down the road, getting ones half that size. Is there any more construct, any more talk about that?
That is something, Pam, that will be taken up whenever we look at re-establishing our tariff with the Public Safety, or the Public Service Commission, and that's something we look at when we look at doing rates, because again, it has to be... The size will have to dictate the rate on that, and anytime we change rates for the portion of our routes that are outside to corporate limits in Buchanan, we have to go through the Public Service Commission. So that's part of a discussion later on when we look at addressing differences in rates, but absolutely, that's something that we'll look at doing a smaller version as well with a reduced rate.
Well, I was concerned about that in the beginning because the older people were giving several complaints about who officially handled those.
Well, if there's a special circumstance, they can call the supervisor, you know, if there's a medical need or something. And again, we still do that even with carryout services. There's several carryouts in the city of Buchanan where we have older residents that can't get their garbage to the curb. They provide documentation to the waste department, then our guys there pick that trash up wherever they keep it stored. So that's an option as well. So anyone that calls you about that, they can call Jeff Wong or myself or in here at City Hall, and Jeff will come out and take a look. And like I said, if they provide documentation that are unable to handle it, then we can make arrangements for that. There are certain special circumstances.
Jerry, my recollection during one of those presentations was that there were 32, 64, and 96-gallon containers, and that at one point in time, it looked like if a person would want to purchase their own 64-gallon, they could, because it's still mechanica... It still can be taken on the dump truck. Is that correct? It's still...
Ways forward, ways forward, whatever. And that was, again, that was a discussion with the toder system at the time. In order for us to have the different-sized toders that we use, and keep in mind, the other part of the toder system was identification. We have an awful lot of customers that we can't identify out there in that toter, whether it be not quite in the city, you know, outside the Jawbone driveways or whatever. That toter's their identification, so that's another part of this system. But back to the different sizes, in order for waste collection to have implemented the toder system at that time with three different sizes, we would have had to go back to the Public Service Commission and completely gutted our tariff at that time and addressed rates, and we weren't ready to do that. We weren't ready to...
I understand that, but can the 96 and the 64 be, is it compatible with what our equipment is now?
Again, our equipment on the trucks can pick up anything that has that bar on it, Dave, in the cans, but it's all down to identification.
I understand it, but I think one of the issues we're going to face, from a very practical position, is that we have not had really a very severe winter or even a normal winter in the last couple of years. And as Pam has said, I've got a lot of calls also, and 96 is going to be very difficult for a lot of our residents in the future, I think.
We have an aging population, and I know Callie, I think, was, made a presentation, she was on the video, showing how easy it is to move the 96-gallon, but that was during a time period where there was good weather and so forth. I think one of the things that you would need to take a serious look at is to identifying what are the different scenarios where a person could have a 64-gallon and we could accommodate them. I think that's very important for the future, because we have an aging population, and I hate to see, I mean, I already know some people that have fallen with a 96 because they're too ornery to get people to help them, so they're trying to do it themselves. And I hate to see, I mean, I already know some people that have fallen with a 96 because they're too ornery to get some people to help them, so they're trying to do it themselves. And it's not easy sometimes, so I just want to throw that out there.
I agree, and like I said, that was part of the discussion when we implemented the toder system. But that being said as well, I think the difference between a 94 gallon and a 64 gallon toder as far as weight, it's only somewhere in the 10-pound range. So with your waste, you know, if you're putting the same amount of waste with either one, you're not reducing the weight of the container, just the size.
But there's a lot of single households in Buchanan.
Yes, and there's a lot, as you said, and that's also a consideration, not just in Buchanan, but in our routes outside the corporate limits, is we have a lot of folks that are elderly that maybe only have one kitchen bag a week, and that's a consideration for the smaller containers. But right now, we don't have that.
Yeah, I just think we need to be very open-minded in regard to this for the future.
Jerry, what percentage of our toders have been distributed?
About 4,000 now.
I was gonna report that, we have a 4,000.
Seventy-five percent, right?
It's pretty close.
And I see in Ambie's report, the deadline's May 30th?
Yep, that's our goal.
And after that, we won't pick it up, or what's the...
No, and that's another issue with, that we discussed when we implemented the toder system was, we could have went with a 64 gallon toder and been within our current tariff, because our current tariff says two 30-gallon containers a week. So of course, the 64 gallon would have covered that. But we opted for the larger because one of the things that we probably would see even if implementing the 64 gallons, people would take that 64 gallon and then we would have overflow. And again, that's part of the toder system is not putting our people in a position where they have to pick up from the ground or create backstretch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Tell the guys we appreciate them all.
Thanks, Jerry.
Next up is our Director of Finance Administration, Ambie Jenkins. Ambie, how you doing?
Pretty good, and Happy New Year. I've got a really short report. We've been busy with...
We gotta make up for the mayor's opening.
You want me to read it again? Do we have the air conditioner?
Great.
I'm just driving.
Is it hot or cold?
Okay, so we've been working on our year-end reports with WDU's 1099s, finishing out our calendar year reports. So been doing a lot of that lately, and I'll give you, I just want to give you your balances of general fund, coal tax, municipal stabilization. I did type the wrong number in Stalker Youth Center, Youth Center Capital Campaign. On your reports, got the wrong numbers, 333,395 dollars with the pledges. I was transferring some of the donations out of general fund and I was using old numbers.
What was that again, Ambie?
I'll give you a new one, it's 333,395 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
In the capital campaign with the pledges. In your general fund checking, the end of December was 909,736, but it did just transfer out donations that were contributed of 38,619 to put into that youth center savings account. So you actually technically had 871,117 dollars in general fund. Your coal tax was 54,492 dollars. We generally don't expend anything out of there and wait for a big paving project to deplete that, and we need to do that this year. The municipal stabilization fund, 513,501, and then your historic landmarks savings is 3,023 dollars. And I am getting the draft information, line items detailed, what we finished December with, to give to supervisors so we can send that out and begin our budgetary meetings for the new budget 2021. That's it.
Questions, Ambie?
And the last payment for the public safety complex will be in February?
End of March, right?
Yep, the last, well, the D goes dead March, the last payment's around February.
Okay. The ordinance expired March 13th?
Yes, yes.
But the last payment's in February?
That's correct.
Follow up on what a couple of council members said about the toders, does the staff get a lot of calls about them as well?
We get calls about them. I'm not gonna say a lot, but we did get calls, but we always refer them to the supervisor. If it's a physical, that they're having a physical problem trying to get those toders out, then we talk to Jeff about it, and they do make special arrangements. We just have to identify them. And whether that identity's with a sticker process or with a toder, we do encourage them to use a toder because it does identify areas, particularly out in accounting where we've had some issues. And actually, if you, if you keep up with our finances, I'm noticing a trend that it's beneficial financially. It has eliminated these, some of these piles and people who weren't paying for garbage, it was hard to identify what this pile belonged to. If they have a toder out there, we know what to pick up.
I think there's no doubt that it's a good system, I just think we need to...
We talked about that, too, right in the very beginning, about eventually getting to a system where we might use smaller toders for elderly people who only have one bag. But some of them probably can't handle them, so we are, we do know that, we're cognizant of that, and we're trying to work out some details, special circumstances.
I'm sure there's some area services that can help, but just something that, since it's being brought up, we can extend our look into those areas, identify the senior citizens that need assistance, and try to figure out a way to have a program that can help them.
It would be nice, and it's, we don't have all the programs that can help elderly, and sometimes that comes up here, and we'd like to be able to tell them.
Well, there's probably some people that would say, look, I'll give you my 60, 96 gallon container, and I'll buy my own 64 gallon, which can be...
But doesn't eliminate the identification part?
Right.
These have barcodes in them.
Yeah.
We could go to a barcode system, it would make it much faster to go through garbage pickup and not try to read the number to say, okay, this one isn't paying. If we can get that barcode implemented after we get this process in, would be a great...
I think we just need to find a way to make the program, the toder program, work. Yeah, actually work.
And if there was no part of implementing the toder program that was meant to be a hindrance to the public?
No.
It was a win-win for both public and ours.
We know that, Jerry, we just have a large, you know, unfortunately, a percentage of population has difficulty with 96 gallons. That's not gonna change, but it ain't gonna get worse.
Other questions, Ambie? Thanks, Ambie. That was Dallas, we'll probably appreciate them all. Next up is our Fire Chief, A.D. Kim.
Chief? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I did see one of your old toders that are day in a car accident. It's no longer usable, but somebody said it jumped out in front of the car for some reason. I'm just kidding. In your packet is our year-end responses. We, that's up about 40 calls from last year, 1,274 calls for service. And in your packet, it's broken down into everything the nitrous can do. My meeting in February, I'll have a breakdown of all the activity of individuals, training hours, 09 yards, volunteer anything for you. Seems that when the first meeting in January falls the day after the first, and your report guy's on his days off, it's kind of hard to get there. Couple of new things, if you come into Firehouse, we've always had coded doors on the exterior to get in, but those have always been unlocked during the day. Now we've put coded doors into the living area. After a recent incident, we don't want the public just venturing in, being able to venture into the living area where the guys are taking classes and stuff. We're also gonna put up a couple of new cameras. The only camera facing our front door at this time is the police department's, and the only person that can view that is Tim, and if it's after hours. That way, if somebody rings the doorbell, as the crew on duty goes by our view screen, they can look and see who's at the door before they open it up. So some new safety functions that we have to start taking into consideration. So we did have a little incident a couple of weeks ago, one of our garage doors malfunctioned. It went up, and as the truck, one truck was going to a fire, you know how the magnets work on a garage door, it went up and hit, and it came right back down. It damaged the door, the two bottom panels that had to be replaced, two pieces of glass. I gave the bid to Ambie. We have to get it done, and it's, it happens. Accidents happen, but that's in the process of being fixed. But other than that, I'm pretty short tonight, unless you all have any questions.
Looking on this mutual aid number calls, and Banks District has three, and Weston has 14?
Yeah, we run anything this side of Weston, we run automatic with them on fires. So Banks, the only place that we are automatic with them is from the area they have around the game farm and the French Road. The rest of the time, it's Selbyville or Walkerville or Packer Valley. We're not, we're not a big automatic mutual aid with Rock Cave unless they request us. Weston, they run mutual aid with us. Anything west of Hampton Inn to Buchanan Mountain, and anything from the Georgetown Road this way, we respond with Weston automatic. Because they have nobody else that's strategically placed, or we don't. I mean, our closest mutual aid to Buchanan Mountain would be Warren District, and Weston's closer. We don't, counties don't matter to us, it's who can give us the quickest support.
I'm sure that's the way the people in the having the fire or the accidents do.
Yeah, yeah, so, you have any questions, sir?
Any questions for A.D.? Thanks, A.D., appreciate it. Tell the guys to be safe. City Attorney Tom O'Neil. How's it going, Tom? Feeling a little better, I guess?
Well, we're making progress. I'm gonna largely defer to strategic. Been primarily working on preparing for a couple of, a couple of upcoming interactions with County Commission over the Route 33, Tenerton Public Service District and the $15,000 grants that was going to be made to the, to the city for first due fire fee. I'll be meeting with the County Commission on the morning of January 16th to discuss that issue, their invitation. And I'll be able to report back following that meeting.
You want any of us there?
Anybody who is interested in being there is more than welcome.
What time is it, Tom?
9:30.
You're gonna...
Appreciate the backup, yeah.
You're gonna represent us at the January 9th hearing, right?
Yes, a week from tonight, that's right.
That's the...
It's the public hearing on the expansion of the Tenerton PSD's footprint. I recall, did we discuss the last meeting, the Public Service Commission's rendering of their opinion on this matter? Okay, but we're in a very good position, I think.
Sure. Thanks, Tom, we'll bring you back here in a couple of minutes. Correspondence and information, you've got the Elmore Volunteer Fire Department Letter, Mutual Aid into the Buchanan first due area. Diana Thompson of 144 Wood Street has sent a letter. Her issue is, is that she's got a sewer problem that's created from a tree across the street from her that continues to grow into the lawn, as I understand it. Jerry, do you want to offer anything about that?
They are gonna TV the line, I believe, next week to see what the problem is. I talked with both Sam and Buck earlier this afternoon about this, and they don't believe... There are actual sewer connections on the opposite side of the street, as it appears in mapping, so they don't believe that the tree is the issue. It is a weeping willow, so it will search water, but it's on the opposite side of the street. So typically, the root zone doesn't extend out much further than the drip line of the tree. So they think it's more of a pipe problem than they do a tree. But Sam's recalled, there've been problems there for years.
Have we notified her that we're looking at it?
I haven't, I just got the letter today, Dave, I've been off.
Okay, really? That'd be nice that she knows that we're gonna respond to it.
And it's sanitary, it's really a sanitary board matter, anyway, but it's, we wanted Council to be aware of it.
As I told Buck, we typically don't cut a bottom three or root infiltration, we try to take care of the root infiltration.
And then the third correspondence and information item is, are my remarks at the lighting of the menorah on December 20th. The consent agenda, council, if you approve it, consists of three items. The approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting, excuse me, of December 19, the approval of our building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of the general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, I have a second to his motion, I have a second by Mrs. Bucklow. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion, carries. Takes us down to our strategic issues for discussion and/or vote. First, Councilman Thomas asked that we place on the agenda, and I promised him we would, a discussion regarding pay increase for council members. Dave, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I don't have a specific recommendation, but as you said in your letter at the beginning of the meeting, the sanitation board hasn't had a rate increase since 2011. Well, the council, the mayor, and the recorder, not recorder, got an increase last meeting. But it's not the people that are sitting, it's the positions. None of us can give ourselves an increase. The only people who can get an increase the next cycle are those who are, the positions are up for election. And it's been 16 years since the council and the mayor have had an increase. And I think it's the time that we take a serious look at providing something for these positions. Again, the only, Mary Albon and I would not be able to receive an increase because we're not running for, our positions aren't up. The other four are, and then Randy, we did that recording, recorder position last time, council member. But I think it's time. And, you know, if you take a look at the responsibilities that the council has, and especially the recorder and the mayor, it doesn't make any sense not to give an increase this next cycle. If we don't do it, it will be basically 20 years for the mayor. Because, you know, it's a four-year cycle. And for some of the council's members, it will be, it could be 20 years. So I don't have a specific recommendation, but Robbie, the last meeting indicated, let's, you know, let's get together, maybe the Revenue Cost Committee ought to take a look at this. I'm not asking for anything that would distress the city financially. But, you know, we each get $400 a month as a council, $4,800 a year. And we meet more than just two council meetings, we also meet with the, we're on a board, and we have other meetings, too, especially during the budgeting process. So I do think it's time. And the mayor, gosh, he has, you know, more responsibility than anybody, and he hasn't had an increase of position in 16 years. And I think it's time we take a serious look at this. And I would recommend, David, that, you know, use the, if you want to use the Insurance Committee or the Cost Revenue Committee or some committee to come back...
Who's on the Revenue Committee?
I'm on the Revenue Committee, so, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be eligible for an increase. So I don't have any...
He'd be a good committee member.
I don't have any... What in the fires does this mean?
You and Mary Albon can report back to council. We'll give you until, by July 1st, does that work for you?
No, it has to be, I believe, when I ran for council 2004, it was $50, I believe.
That's about right.
Am I right? It was $100 for both. And I had been asked to run for County Commission also, and I checked that out, and it was way too much money. Because I was on a long-term disability through my insurance, I had private insurance. And, you know, you have to follow certain rules and regulations. And then somebody said, well, hell, do it for the city, they only get 50 bucks a smack or something like that. I said, ah, that sounds pretty good. None of us do it for the money. But I do think there ought to be a process that makes sense. You know, I'm disappointed that the municipal league hasn't made a comment about this. The state legislature gives the county commissioners their increases. And the differentiation is just unbelievable, but I wouldn't even approach that. I think we ought to take a look at, you know, $100 or $200 extra a month for a council. I would go towards $30,000 for the mayor. I would go towards $30,000 for the, for the mayor. And David, you said you didn't want to accept that, but that's not you, it's a position. And all of us, all of us sitting up here donate things for our city, whether it's the Stockard Youth Center or the Spelling Bee or, you know, Festival Fridays or what have you. We're all trying to do things to make our city better. And I feel as part of my responsibility, getting, getting X amount of dollars each month, I'd give some of that back. I think that's important. I think all of us do that. We don't have to share how much that is, but that's important.
Other council members' thoughts? We can establish a committee to look at it. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. Thank you. When I was county clerk, I made $28,000 a year. Current county clerk makes in excess of $60,000 a year. The county commissioners made around $7,000, $8,000 back when, when I was clerk first, and now it's $65,000, $70,000 a year, including benefits. Bigger cities than ours get way more money for the councilman, for the mayor, for the recorder. Gentlemen, y'all go to jail for the same offenses. You're responsible for everything identical to each other. County commission, budget and running the county, sometimes, never mind, I'll cut that one out. But I, I, I think it's a good idea to discuss and consider an increase to city council. I know it's not like the county commission where that is a good salary for somebody that wants to make a decent living at $60,000. $4,800 is just a little bit of money thrown to the wind. We'd spend more than that on going out to dinner.
Where do you eat?
I eat someplace where it's $3 a cup for coffee and they charge you $3 a cup for a refill. That place is called CJ Meggs.
Oh, yeah. I get free breakfast.
Yeah, well, see? Anyway, I'd like to.
He was teasing.
I was like, I wasn't teasing. That's my wife, she's not teasing either.
Sure, I was teasing.
But the.
We're getting off.
I'd be, I'd be really in favor of an increase for council. I think it's long due, 20 years to wait for an increase. And I think it's, it ought to be done like the legislature does this county offices anyway, where at the beginning of a, of a certain time, everybody gets an increase.
Well, there would be a cycle.
Well, there, there is a cycle, but this cycle here is ridiculous.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't have a cycle. We have to make the decision, and it's embarrassing sometimes as a council person to make a recommendation that the council person gets an increase. Oftentimes, oftentimes it's misreported what it really, you know, affects. I want, I want to say that the commissioners make $40,000, okay?
Benefits.
That's what they make, $40,000. They have benefits, they have full benefits pension plan and health plan. If they take the family health plan, you're looking in excess of $70,000 in total compensation. That includes FICA and all those kinds of things too. So, and we don't get benefits here. You know, when I first ran in 2004, the rumor was, oh, man, city council people get all sorts of benefits, health insurance, this and that. No, that, that's not true. So you, when you find it, if you hear rumors, like David said with Facebook, track it down because a lot of stuff you see on Facebook is not true.
Anyway, I'm in favor of an increase, not because I was a prior councilman, but, and I'm not being councilman anymore. I'd like to run for mayor sometime.
You got a chance.
Anyway.
More than married.
Thanks, Ron.
What's the rest of council think?
Well, I'm like, I think, I mean, since I'm going to be running, I'm going to be running, I can't be a part of, I don't want to be a part of any of that, but I think since Dave and Mary will not be running, I'd like to see Dave and Mary and maybe Ambie, the three of them get together, sit down and come up with.
Pressure's on, Ambie.
Well, she's the money lady.
Asking the banker to spend more money, huh?
She's the money lady.
That's a good idea. Ambie will keep it on the cheap if there is a reason.
Ambie will be prude.
Okay, so.
She'll be prude.
I like Pam's recommendation. Understand that Thomas and Albaugh were just elected in 2018 to four-year terms. Their term, they are not impacted whatsoever unless in 2022, they would run again. So they, they would not be impacted by this. And in fact, none of us might be impacted. We could all either not run or be voted out. And it's, so it's the new, so I've heard Pam speak about this. She's suggesting a committee of Ambie Jenkins, Dave Thomas, and Mary Albaugh look at it and come back with a recommendation during the next meeting or two. Does that sound acceptable to council?
Give us a first, give us a first meeting in February, David. I think that.
I said next meeting or two.
So even if they form a committee and they make a recommendation to us, it's going to be up to us to vote on.
Exactly.
I mean, I remember receiving my first check when I started serving on council, and I thought, hey, $362.40 that I've, I've gotten before, and I'm going to get this every month. And hey, maybe I can go buy a new car.
That's about a copy.
That's a payment, you know? I mean, you know, I thought that, that was great. I think there's a difference between public service and public employment, you know? And I believe this position at, at council is at-will public service, not, it's not employment. And if you're compelled to serve the community, do so without expectation of payment. There, I, I recently was a meeting in Cowan, and they said they had the four city recorders, and I said, well, what do they get paid? And they said, they don't get paid anything. So I, you know, that's possible, a reasoning why, why they're not, but I think money and politics have caused enough problems. And I don't support increasing the pay. I think it's, it's a token, although a significant amount, and I appreciate it, but I certainly, if you're doing this for the money, and I think you're, or that that's a motivation to do this job, I think you should be compelled by, you know, trying to be part of something bigger than yourself and making decisions that are in what you truly believe to be the best interest of the community. And so that's my position.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Mr. Skinner, Mr. Sanders?
I couldn't say anything better than CJ did, so I'm.
So Pam, do you want to put it in the form of a motion for the council to consider?
Yes.
Your motion, as I understand it, is to have a committee of Ambie Jenkins, Dave Thomas, and Mary Albaugh come back at the next couple of meetings with a recommendation to council to consider for a new compensation model for the rest of council, not the city recorder, because we're going to take that up here next. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Did you get that motion, Mr. Sanders? So Pam has made the motion. Is there a second to her motion?
I'll second it, sir.
Mr. Skinner has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question, and let's do this by roll call vote. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Buckle?
Yes.
Mr. Rylands?
No.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes, for discussion.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
And the mayor votes no. So by a margin of 4 to 2, the committee of Ambie Jenkins, Dave Thomas, and Mary Albaugh will report back to council during the next couple of meetings on the matter, and then the entire council will consider it. Okay, first reading of ordinance number 440, we need Mr. O'Neill back up front and center to walk us through. Boy, my ordinances always went at least three, four pages, Tom. This is, you're showing me up here with your.
Prejudice is the soul of wit. According to somebody or other. So it's requested to draft this ordinance, so I will, I will read it by caption, and then I'll read a couple of the pertinent whereas clauses and then walk through kind of what the functional provisions of the ordinance are. Ordinance number 440 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance modifying the compensation paid to the city recorder or acting city recorder for performing those duties related to his or her office and setting an effective date for the set increase. Whereas West Virginia Code 8512 empowers a municipality to quote, "Fix or cause to be fixed the salary or compensation of every municipal officer, provided that the salary of any officer shall not be increased or diminished during its term." And whereas the council recognizes that the salary paid to the city recorder has not been changed for nearly 16 years. And whereas the council recognizes the charter and ordinances of the city of Buchanan and resolutions of the city council require the city recorder to serve as ex officio member of virtually every board, committee, and commission of the city, several of which boards, committees, and commissions have been created in recent years, and so on. The council has determined that the current salary is inadequate to compensate the recorder for the increased myriad responsibilities of the office. Whereas the council has determined that an increase paid to the city recorder or to the individual exercising the duties of the recorder in the event of vacancy shall arise in that office is reasonable, prudent, and appropriate and timely, and so on. So the Article 1, which is the meat of the ordinance, provides that the city recorder or designated acting city recorder in the case of a vacancy in the office of city recorder shall be compensated as follows. From the general fund of the city, the sum of $500 per month. From the water board of the city, the sum of $200 per month. From the sanitary board, the sum of $200 per month. From the waste board, similarly, the sum of $200 per month. And from the consolidated public works board, the sum of $200 per month, to be made effective at the commencement of the next term of the city recorder, which shall commence upon the certification of the election taking place on May 12th of 2020.
About May 22 is usually takes. Yeah, give or take.
Whenever the certification happens, that's when the ordinance will take effect.
You heard Tom speak to this. The ordinance technically would be effective if you approved it on the second reading, the first reading and I the second reading next time. It would be effective February 15th, but it would not be implemented until some point in May. So I have a motion by Thomas, may I have a second to his motion? I have a second by Buckle. Is there any discussion on motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign the minutes reflect the motion carried unanimously. Takes us down to comments and announcements. I can't wait to hear from Mary Albaugh. Mary, what do you got for us, you're not here? Pam Buckle, what you got?
I wanted to thank Buchanan, the Retail Merchants Association for putting on the Adventure and Toy Land. We, they end up having a post plant and have it at Stockard Youth Center, and very successful. And also, I was asked, have we heard any more about the study on 33 with all these wrecks? You know, there could have been three more fatalities, stayed before yesterday.
We've made casual inquiries with the local folks on multiple occasions, and they say it's in Charleston's hands. And it's kind of like waiting for the abandoned mines land stuff. I'm not meaning to be overly critical, but the.
That's really encouraging us in Charleston.
Yeah, things, things tend to go pretty slowly once they arrive at Charleston. Pam, I, I can do another letter and ask the status. It's been six, seven months since we sent the last one.
I think it was, what, three days ago, another accident here at Stockard Fork, and there was two children involved, and my life lighted, and a 18-wheeler ran the stocklight.
Ran right through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we know it's a horrible situation, Pam. I'll, I'll send another letter to the.
What are you doing again for citizens to get together, go to Charleston and meet with these people, 150 people to go down there and tell them what kind of a problem we have? Instead of them just hearing it from.
They're going to have a public hearing here, Ron. They've, they've hired a consultant to do a study. They wouldn't commit to the timing of the study, but the hiring of the consultant has been, has happened. I assume that that consultant is doing its work, and when the report is ready to be shared with the community, we will probably host the hearing at the community and training room. That's all I know, but I don't have a date yet.
I hate to have to sue the state government because of my opinion.
Mr. Rylands?
Well, as we approach this new decade, I think we look back 10 years ago in Buchanan, and I think we've made a lot of strides. I think we've differentiated ourselves from a lot of other communities across West Virginia, setting the intention to work together in the community's best interest. I mean, the two biggest obstacles to community development are personality conflicts and turf issues. And if you're not willing to put those aside and work with anyone for a successful outcome, then you're following your impulses, and I don't think it's going to pay off in the long run. So I think having set that intention 10 years ago as a community and aligning our behavior with that intention and choosing to work together, that I think we've come a long way. And that we're almost to the point that just get out of the way of success. Don't try to start micromanaging and making judgments about things that will hinder our progress. So stay on the path, work together, focus on your best interest, and be cognizant of personality conflicts and turf issues that don't let them get in the way of moving our community forward.
Thanks, CJ. Mr. Skinner?
I'll, I'll reserve my comments this evening. I'm still getting over the crud, so I'm.
Everybody's sick. Just don't, just don't use that old line that it's in the water. Really good water. Mr. Thomas?
I'll be fairly brief. I somewhat agree, but I also disagree with CJ on some issues regarding the, how successful we've been working together. I think there, there are always inherent conflicts because we're working with people. And there's always so much misinformation outside, especially today with the internet and Facebook and everything else. I would just challenge the whole community, the whole state of West Virginia. At some point in time, we have to take a look at what's going to be most efficient, cost-effective, and efficient for our communities, the counties and municipalities and the state. We don't have that system yet. And, you know, I've talked about metric government for a long time. Got 24,000 people in Upshur County, and we got a county commission that makes way too much money with their benefits. I don't disagree with what CJ was saying about, you know, politicians that are making money. I think it's messed up the system to some degree. I think we need term limits in, in Congress. It's ridiculous. But I would ask people to be informed about the different things you're looking at in regard to municipalities and counties and state legislature and the bureaucracy we have. We've seen certain things, for example, in the Public Service Commission, that is just, I can't imagine what they're doing half the time. So, you know, if, if you want it better, better the community, you got to get involved and get information. I really think metric government and the future for our state is going to be a great answer. But, you know, it's got a long way to go. And everybody have a happy new year. Don't forget the Spelling Bee. And David, I appreciated your seven-page analysis for the, what we've accomplished the last X amount of years.
That put me back in the crud.
We just, we're not here by the clock of it.
But I also, I also think we, as CJ said, we've got to learn how to work together and delineate between the personal issues versus the professional issues and what's good for all of us. That's it.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's been, it's been a great, as I said, it's a last-minute learning experience. And, and being involved in all of the different boards and all of the different activities of the city has really opened my eyes as to what it is that we do and that what we do to better the other lives of members of our community. Just kind of to address, you know, the topics of the, of the raises and the issues, the American Verif- I didn't ask for a raise, and I wouldn't, won't get a raise if I don't get elected again. So I do want to just bring that point. That is for the new city recorder. And I, I think that whoever that next recorder is, I do intend to run, but whoever it is, I hope they will dedicate themselves to being a professional, business-type person, approach you to that, take every opportunity to give back to the community above and beyond the meaning that is required in that position. It's an awesome opportunity to, to sit at the different board meetings and to absorb the. It's an awesome opportunity to sit at the different board meetings and to absorb the inner workings of the different boards. And to visit all the different physical plants in this city and to see the dedication of all of the employees, I think that that is what I've enjoyed more than anything. It's getting to know the personnel that run this city day in and day out. We hear from Jerry, we hear from Ambi, we hear from the different department heads from time to time, but I just wish every citizen could be every employee of the city. I haven't met one yet that hates their job. I haven't met one yet that doesn't like the citizens and the people and performing their duties and so forth, whatever those duties might be. So, you know, I did vote for the expiration of possible raises for the rest of council members. We'll let that develop and see what comes up and discuss it. Doesn't mean we'll vote for it or move ahead with it. But I think we ought to be open to looking at everything and always being transparent with the thoughts of the city and the aspirations of the city. So we'll see what 2020 brings us. I think it's going to be exciting, and I look forward to being a part of it, at least up until the next election. We'll see what happens after that. So, thank you.
About 10 days thereafter.
Right.
Just a couple of reminders. We've heard it a couple of times already. January 24th, Spelling Bee. February 2nd, we always have fun out at French Creek with French Creek Freddie on Groundhog Day. So even in the winter months, we're planning on doing the Martin Luther King 88 sentences of the "I Have a Dream" speech. So anybody who wants to participate in that, it's scripted. We have two microphones in Jawbone Park. We line the people up both sides. Everybody comes up, and they know exactly what number sentence they're reading. It took us about 20 minutes last year on a windy day, and it was just a terrific exercise, coming together for something very special. So if you're interested in participating, just message me, and we'll put you in the loop as one of the 88-sentence readers. That's all I have, except to wish everybody a happy new year in 2020. I'd entertain a motion that we... Boy, Thomas, that was the biggest motion I... Second to his motion?
Second.
I heard Buckle first, I think. Well, the motion is second. Call for adjournment. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Don't be shy. We're out of here.